Let's start, shall we? Welcome, everybody. Call the order of the Village Vista and the regular board meeting dated Monday, March 1st, 2021 at 6:00 PM. Kathryn, would you take the role, please?
Lyneum.
Here.
Trustee Sella.
Here.
Trustee Wood. Trustee Mahoney.
Here.
Trustee Andreessen. Trustee Kuncy.
Here.
And President Miller.
Here, just for the record, trustees Wood and Andreessen have both notified us that they will be out traveling on business this evening, so they cannot join us. Having said that, we will bypass the Pledge of Allegiance this evening and go directly to public comment on agenda items only. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to comment? Going once. Okay, we'll move on. We have no consent agenda this evening, so the first thing we have, if I could have a motion on six, eight, please, which is Village Board Minutes.
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the regular Village Board meeting minutes dated February 15th, 2021.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
Kathryn.
Trustee Lyneum.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
And Trustee Kuncy.
Yes.
All right. Same as I don't see any representative from the Police Department with us yet. Why don't we go directly to, actually, well, do we need a motion to, I'll ask the attorney this, do we need a motion to bring C and D ahead of items being the new items?
No, as long as the board is fine with it, you can just go right ahead to the item C.
Good, any objections? We have a motion on item C, please.
Make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the number of Class I liquor licenses River Street Collective.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on this.
Did this one go before the Liquor Commission?
No.
Okay. So they just want to sell packaged goods outside of the corner business there on River?
Well, we have, Taylor, are you going to be the spokesperson here tonight?
I am, as well as Michelle Schwann, she's also on, she's the co-owner of River Street Collective.
Okay, welcome, Michelle.
You're.
So I can speak about this item. We typically have added additional licenses without going to the Liquor Commission. Usually, the Liquor Commission are reserved for Liquor Commission citations, suspensions, and the revoking of licenses. So what we're doing is asking to create a license that's similar to the Uncommon Palette. This is really my recommendation. Taylor contacted the village and asked for a liquor license. She explained what she would like to do, and which is primarily serve wine for consumption on premise, maybe beer, but she indicated that it was nothing more than that. She was thinking about having some events and, but also having the availability at any time. So this license, given the nature of this business, was, is very similar to the Uncommon Palette, now the Eastside Wine and Coffee and Wine Bar. So that's why the recommendation is to go with this Class I license. It wasn't necessarily at the request of the owners to sell wine for sale, but they would certainly be able to do that. It was more about this class being the closely, closest aligned class for what they're requesting. And that's why it's on the agenda for, to consider increasing the licenses from one to two.
So, um, help me understand the difference between this license, because Uncommon Palette slash Eastside Cafe also serves food. Are Taylor and Michelle, were you guys also planning on trying to serve food as well? Or is that restricted in this license, Jennifer?
Um, no, it's not restricted. There's, it's just that it has to sell specialty type items, you know? And it's certainly not really a requirement. The, the way the license was written, it was written for the Uncommon Palette, and they were, they were going to do that. Now, Taylor, you do probably sell some things, I've seen, that are food-related items, correct?
We do have a gourmet food section, which we carry some jams and local chocolates, things like that. Michelle and I did not plan to serve any food like they do at the Uncommon Palette, so that was not something that was part of our plan.
Right, it's more packaged food.
Yes, it is. It's prepackaged, yes. Everything that we carry in the shop from local vendors is prepared in their commercial kitchens with their licensing, and they are basically on a consignment situation with our store, so we are not preparing any food.
Got it, thank you.
So is there not going to be any food at all served? Is that, is that correct? Whether prepared by you guys or not?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Oh, I was just going to elaborate. It is not, it's not a restaurant. There isn't food service. It's packaged food for sale as a goods and services item.
No, but what I'm saying is that every other liquor establishment that we have, or every other establishment that serves liquor, I should say, also serves food. Unless it's a liquor store.
I mean, what about Black and Gray? They don't serve food.
Well.
It's a brewery license, it's a different animal. I, I will point out that last year, we turned down Jay at the gas station for open liquor, just as a reminder. I would assume you could make the same argument, or he could anyway, that they sell packaged food there.
I mean, with Jay, that was also turning down the slot machines, not just, not just the open liquor.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little bit on the fence on this one.
Dan?
I, I'm for it. I think, I think it's a good thing.
Does the board have a blurb, Jennifer, that we wrote, our description of our intent and vision for how this license will support kind of what our vision is for the shop in the long term? Is that available to them?
It was on the packet, we saw it.
I think it is, yeah.
What, yeah, what the intent is?
I think there's a difference between what, what River Street Collective is asking for and what Jay was asking for. Jay doesn't have an outdoor back patio, and I don't think people are going to be spending a lot of time at Jay's, you know, browsing product. It's more of an in and out, and I also had a problem with serving open alcohol that then could go into cars or would have to manage. Not that it can't happen here, but the, this main reason for going into Jay's was to get gas or to get a packaged good, not necessarily to, it's not a destination, it wasn't a destination for other purposes of, of shopping or trying to create more of an experience, is what I think you guys called it in your, in your little write-up.
I guess I would have a question of, you mentioned, I think, in the beginning statement that maybe it was also going to be event-related. What sort of events were you talking, were you thinking of? Did I mishear that?
That, or Jennifer?
Well, if it's not true, I should say it's not true. I don't, I mean, I don't know. I thought I heard that, but maybe I didn't.
No, I think originally, they were looking for maybe doing it like on an event basis, you know, as an alternative, but then decided they have the patio and that they would be wanting, if anyone wanted a glass of wine at any time, it would be better to, rather than try to create some sort of specialty license that would be event-based. And when I say event, I mean like a store event, not an event in our downtown, then to go in this direction, because we had a license that was so similar. You know, alternatively, we could create a different type of license. It's just typically what you see is you create all sorts of licenses, and then you come back a decade later and you try to pair them all down, because you've gotten different kinds of licenses for each business. So this license, it doesn't have to be this license, it's really the concept. This was a very close license, considering merchandise. It was kind of like the Uncommon Palette expanded to this space and created a, became a separate business, so it was a very similar business with a very similar model, but we could certainly create a different license also. This was a more, it was just a way of keeping the code cleaner, and it was also more efficient for the business owner to go this route.
Doesn't the patio speak to Beer Garden license? And if not, why not? I mean, doesn't it fall under a Beer Garden classification, or couldn't it?
Um, the Beer Garden restrictions and requirements go along with the Class A license, which would be a tavern license, that has different hours and capacity, kind of like with the eight-foot wall requirement, similar to Bandidos. Then there is what you, we do have some other requirements that are not Beer Garden, but they're outdoor dining requirements, and those go only specifically with the restaurant licenses, which are Class E licenses. So this license doesn't have those specific requirements, because it's not, the hours of operation are less, and it's not designed to be like a restaurant or anything where you stay for a long time. So we also don't have those requirements on anybody who has like a sidewalk service endorsement, where they're, they put tables on the public right away. Like, for example, the tables that are outside of Eastside Cafe don't have a fence around them. They're allowed to be on the, right away without fencing, because we don't have those requirements for that kind of outdoor dining. So you could call it a Beer Garden, but it's not a Beer Garden under our code. It's also not outdoor dining under our code. It's different.
Where is the patio? Is it upstairs, or is it like a balcony, or is it downstairs on the ground floor and just a patio in the back?
On the first floor. We have two exits in the rear of the building that can access the patio area, and there is a fence around it with just a three-foot gap between two columns, which we plan to enclose if possible.
So let me get this straight, then. It's possible then to get to that back patio area from the rear of the building?
Yes, that's correct.
That's a problem. We can't have that. I mean, you, you can't have open access from the rear without having gone through the main establishment. I don't know if that's, if that's.
Well, we plan to enclose the one section that there, there's no fencing between two columns, and we plan to enclose that area, so that there would be no rear access without entering the main door of our building.
Okay, well, rather than get the cart before the horse, when do you plan to do that? I mean, I don't, I don't feel comfortable issuing you a license without having, making sure that that piece of the puzzle is already in play.
Well, that's something we can have done this weekend.
Is there going to be any supervision of the people that are outside?
Yes, by ours, by ourselves, yes. And we have rear cameras in the rear of the building, and we will be monitoring our customers.
That area is in a direct sightline from both main rooms of the building, so there's also visual, we will have visuals of the people in the back.
I guess my, my biggest concern with this is setting a precedent that we're allowing a liquor license for someplace that doesn't serve food and has no intention of that. It's not as much the outside. Where do we say no when the next person comes to us, that, you know, the funeral home or the haircut place wants to, you know, sell you a beer while you're getting your haircut? Is anybody going to have an issue with that?
Well, yeah, because if the idea that Jennifer mentioned that, you know, every 10 years or so, a municipality will sit down and start to pare back the, the number of classifications of liquor licenses, then this is probably going in the wrong direction, because this is likely to be one of those things that we'll look at in a few years, because what we're doing is customizing a license here for the, for a particular business. That same approach then could come before the board in, in any form, you know? I mean.
Well, I mean, the opposite is, yeah, for Santa's Village, for example, we had to customize a lot of things. There's, there's going to be unique cases, that's.
Yeah.
There are licenses that don't require the sale of food. So this is, that, this is not a license that's different in that capacity, like the Uncommon Palette license does not, I have seen codes written where you must be eating and drinking. Our codes aren't written that way, because that was smart, because they're really difficult to enforce, but we have tavern licenses. Black and Gray obviously has a license, but the tavern licenses don't require the sale of food. There is a business that's pursuing, would like to pursue a license right now in the, I'm sorry, I forgot the, the name of the store, the Native American, I'm blanking now, and there, they would like a tavern license as well, and without the intent of, of serving food. I put this more in like the Galena Cellar's knickknack shop that serves wine. That, that's the concept here, but there are, there are licenses without food. So this is not the only license we have.
Are you talking about the River Street Trading Post?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, I forgot the name.
They want a liquor license there as well.
There's a, there's going to be a, a new business proposed.
Okay.
For a tavern, just like our, the other taverns that, that don't serve food.
Okay.
I mean, we can certainly, we can certainly look at this in all sorts of, of different ways, and maybe we look at the code, if that's something you want to do, we can do that. I just wouldn't go too far in requiring the sale of food at the time of consumption of alcohol, because it is difficult, very difficult to enforce.
My intention was to try and have food served. I was wanting to know what their intent was.
Did, did I read in the, the agenda that hard liquor was also going to be part of this, 40 proof or whatever it was, or what was the, what did I read there? Wasn't just wine?
I think 40 proof is the limit.
Yeah, that's the way the state defines like, in our code, like beer and wine versus full consumption of alcohol. So that's, that's what they will say is 40 proof and less, but their intent is beer, beer and wine, mostly, primarily wine, correct, Taylor?
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking 40%. That would be 80 proof, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct, just beer and wine.
Okay. Anything else on this?
Well, I, I think before, you know, I mean, if, if voting on this, if the board sees it, I think it has to be contingent upon the installation of that fencing. I mean, I'm not comfortable giving a license or, you know, the ability to serve alcohol with, you know, a situation where you can have people coming and going from multiple directions, that, that's not going to work.
Fair enough. Who made the motion, Kathryn?
I did, yes, I did.
Trustee Mahoney.
Want to amend your motion to make it contingent on the fact that the fencing was completed?
So, um, I make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the number of Class I liquor licenses River Street Collective contingent upon the completion of securing the back area and enclosing the open area along the fence line.
Chief, do you have any concerns about this?
I do not. I, I agree with the motion, though.
Okay. How tall is the fence that exists right now? It's only about four feet.
What? Okay, who made the second?
Trustee Lyneum.
Is, I'll amend my second, but is there, are there any concerns with the height of the fence? I mean, I don't know, I guess, the bad, the idea of just serving liquor out there is just troubling to me, because I don't think that was, that that space was meant to.
How is, Jeff, how is that any different than the patio in front of Black and Gray? I mean, that, that isn't even fully enclosed. You go through and get an out, in and out through that. How is that different than the patio in front of Mockingbird? Or, I mean, and we're already approving it through, for Uncommon Palette and for Eastside Cafe, so.
With, with Uncommon Palette, you, you can't, you can't get, the outdoor is not part of the establishment. With Black and Gray, it's an outdoor, you know, seating area.
It's the same. It's a similar, I mean, as far as, as far as of surround, surrounding fence line, and, and there's gaps in it, so.
Well, true enough, but I mean, what we're talking about are different licenses, you know? I mean, so then what we're talking about is, is a different classification altogether. So, yeah, I mean, you can easily draw parallels between them, and, you know, if, if that's permissible or acceptable, then we really don't need the various classes that we have, so.
All right, anything else on this? Last call. Kathryn.
Lyneum.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
And Trustee Kuncy.
Yes.
All right, very good, motion passes. You guys are all set up. Work with Jennifer for anything you need. We will.
Thank you very much.
Yep, and we won't be afraid, we won't be offended if you guys drop off and continue in your evening somewhere else. All right, let's go back to item B, chief. If, if you're ready, I'll drop it over, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Lael. Every year, the Police Department gives an award, Police Officer of the Year for the previous year, and that selection is made by the Deputy Chief, both Sergeants, and myself. The year 2020 was unlike any other, of course, because of COVID, and for much of the year, people were just staying at home. So the, the selection is based, I mean, we had far fewer incidents, for example, in East Dundee, far fewer opportunities for people to distinguish themselves. The suggestion was made that since we had more call-outs for SWAT and for the Mobile Field Force, where our people who are assigned were activated, more in 2020 than ever before, the suggestion was that we should give two awards, first to the SWAT officer and secondly to the Mobile, Mobile Field Force. Those two people are Officer Kevin Lawson and Joe Rivialik, and they, in fact, were activated more than I've ever known in one year. Not to our town, of course, but to nearby towns that had civil disruption, let's say, last spring primarily. So this is what we will present to them each, a nice plaque, individual plaque that reads, presented in recognition for outstanding performance, reflecting the values of a superior law enforcement professional in the village of East Dundee. We also have a multi-year plaque that we keep in the station, and we're going to put two names on it this time, and both of them performed, well, let me be specific, very professionally in the face of, I remember one of our guys was being spit in his face. And you can imagine, this is tough duty, tough duty, and they represented our village remarkably well, showing what professionals they are. So thank you for carving out this time for me to, because each year, I, I want you to know who, who is getting the award.
Thanks, chief. I want you to let them know that the board supports them and is fully behind them and everything that they do every day. This is one of those things that you just can't accomplish with a Zoom meeting, being in the same room and shaking hands with somebody, so please let them know that we're all standing up and shaking their hands virtually this year.
I will, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, on item D, this is a discussion item and consensus. See the information there from Phil, and I believe the recommendation from staff at this point, which is due to the fact that Kane County wants us to take over all maintenance of the trails, that they're probably recommending the cost is going to be too high on this. So we will have a brief discussion on this and see where we want to go. Scott, I know this was your idea, and.
Yeah, I figured I'd have to, to try and make the sell on this. You know, I, I, I just find it so odd that Kane County is asking us to do all this maintenance. Now, East Dundee residents pay taxes to Kane County specifically, or ostensibly at least, to maintain that bike path. Is Kane County planning on returning some of those tax dollars to East Dundee so we can take care of the bike path for them, or?
If I had to play devil's advocate of that, their argument's going to be that it's going to suffer faster deterioration due to the plowing. Well, this is an additional cost that they would have to bear.
Yeah. I'm not, I mean, I understand that, but, you know, and, and I, I'm not even saying that I think we should do this. All I'm saying is that it's, it's very strange to me that, that that's the stipulation. It may have been, you know, that it, this would have been one of the instances where it would have been better to ask for forgiveness rather than permission, but we didn't go that wrong.
Well.
You know, so, I don't know. I, I, I kind of read this this morning and figured that, that, you know, it, it wasn't going to be a sell I could make. So, I, I, I would just say this, you know, that, that trail is, is untapped. I, I consider it untapped by East Dundee. We don't do enough to, to use it. We are, we are a hub for, for bikers. They come to East Dundee and park their cars and then, and then take off, you know? I had people tell me, bikers, tell me that, you know, we, this is the greatest, greatest idea they've seen and all that kind of stuff, and they love it, but, you know, I understand that, that the county doesn't want to do it. There's nothing we can really do about that, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, in all fairness, you're only going to be able to go a couple, what is it, 1.6 or 1, 1.9 miles, I guess? I'm not sure that that's, create the, the, the number of bikers that you've, you know, that you're going to want. I mean, I will throw this out, even though I, I'm not sure this is something we, my opinion on this is something we shouldn't move forward with. Let's look at this logically. They're probably not going to have to plow the path after this month, which gives us another nine months before we can have some discussions and try and figure out if there's a way that we could make this happen.
Correct. Well, if I could just chime in, the problem isn't so much, I mean, it is the maintenance, obviously, that's a, that's a big consideration, but for me, what I read was liability rests with us, and with that being the case, I can't get behind this.
Understood.
Well, I wonder, I do wonder how, how much liability does, does Kane County, is Kane County constantly, constantly getting sued for, for the bike path?
No, but the argument that you could make is if I shovel my sidewalk and somebody falls on it and injures themselves, then I may be liable. If I don't shovel it and you fall on it, then you're not.
Well, I know, I, I've heard that as well. I, I would love to see some case law around that. I think that that's, I think that's, personally, I think that's a, a legal myth. I don't think that's true. I mean, typically, liability revolves around neglect, not around doing too much to, to try and fix a problem.
Understood. I saw attorney unmute himself there, so let him speak.
I can't help but jump in when someone says the phrase case law, my ears perk up. Residential property owners in Illinois have a statutory immunity from negligence claims for snow removal. That doesn't extend to the village. Instead, you have toward immunity under a much more expansive law, which says that if you perform to the standard of care, meaning you've done your job reasonably, then you should be immune, taxpayers shouldn't have to pay out lawsuits, except when apps. meaning you've done it, your job reasonably, then you should be immune. Taxpayers shouldn't have to pay out, um, lawsuits except when absolutely uh, necessary, like if someone was willful or wanton while plowing the snow. I don't know how that would be applied. Uh, but there are some statutory elements that could apply to this activity, both in favor of the Forest Preserve District and the village.
And, and I'll tell you, the, the trail is used heavily when it's covered in snow. If you go, if you go look at the trail, there are footprints, there are bike prints all over it. Um, so I guess, you know, Kane County better watch themselves because they're taking on an immense amount of liability with all these people using their trail and them not taking care of it, but, you know. I don't know if the liability necessarily is that if somebody slips and falls. I mean, if, if we were to maintain it and agree to do that and one of our blades takes a chunk out and someone trips and, you know, takes a spill due to that, um, it seems like there's just a, a lot more ability or leeway, if you will, to point to um, neglect or, or, you know, uh, it's faulty, you know, oversight, um, would otherwise be the case. And so, you know, yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from on this one, Scott, but, you know, just the idea that, you know, with, what Greg had mentioned to us, it seems like there's a, a fair amount of subjectivity that's involved with, you know, what is going to be and what isn't going to be deemed reasonable. And if that's the case, I don't want to get behind the idea of trying to make our argument because it's going to cost us money either way. Whether we win or lose, we're still going to end up in court and.
For the sake of brevity here, um, let's do this. Um, we have four trustees here this evening. So anybody that would be interested in signing the intergovernmental agreement with Kane County, would you raise your hand, please?
I would only do it if we were getting money back. Uh, if we're going to take on all this liability, our liability and responsibility, I, I would say that we would have to demand that we take tax money that we're paying. As citizens of East Dundee, we're paying the county to do this. And, you know, they're not because the trail in front of, uh, Hager Pottery is in terrible shape and it has been for a while now. Um, so there, you know, and Chris, I see you down there. Hello. I'm not trying to take shots at you, my friend. Uh, I appreciate, you know, you having me in the board and all that kind of stuff, but, you know, uh, wait, it, it is what is. I, I don't, I would not, uh, I, I would not agree to sign the, the deal to take on more uh, uh, responsibility and liability without getting, uh, those tax dollars returned to us is my answer to that.
So Scott, I'll promise you this, let's continue to work on this and see if we can come up with some kind of, um, a meaningful solution for next year. Let's not forget.
That's great. I mean, yeah.
Maybe we can come to terms with something. Maybe we could work out something. Maybe we can do some kind of a swap with the county for something for this, for that.
And, you know, and the last thing I'll say is, Phil, uh, thank you. You've taken this whole idea and ran with it. I appreciate that, man. You've done a great job and, uh, I always appreciate all the stuff that you do for us. You do a good job.
So just, so, so I understand, um, uh, when I spoke to, um, the executive director, um, she had essentially had contacted me requesting some feedback on whether or not we want them to continue with draft, drafting, uh, an IGA. And, and it's my understanding that at this point I'll tell, communicate to her that we're not going to pursue that at this point in time. We'll continue conversations internally and then some additional conversations with them. But as far as then moving forward to continue drafting the agreement, I think it sounds like to me it's okay to put that on hold for now. Is that my understanding? Okay.
That's correct. Thank you. Okay, let us move on. Financial reports you have in your package. Um, I have no report this evening, other than the sun was out this week and I saw it in person and it's supposed to be out again later. Uh, we'll go around. Kathleen, any report this evening?
Um, just one observation on the, uh, week, bi-weekly updates. I noticed that um, APET is looking at expanding their operation, almost doubling it. Um, and when they originally moved in, I think there was some concern about their water consumption because most of what they do is, is all aquatic animals or amphibious. Um, has that been um, looked at, addressed, or are we in a better place now because we've got the well over there and we've got plenty of water capacity?
Um, anyone else who can speak to this, Brandis or Phil, uh, jump in, but, um, I believe they have a specialty water rate um, at the time they came, uh, so that would apply to any future use and it factors in the, um, the fact that there isn't a sewer side. Oh, really? That all the water they're using isn't going down the drain? Um, so, so that they, they've been accommodated in a prior agreement.
Okay, and, and that our water capacity shouldn't be an issue to accommodate the expansion that they have.
No.
And it's not going to put any more burden on our, um, water systems and chlorination and everything else, or do they, I imagine they have their own filtering system.
Yeah, Phil, do you speak to the capacity better than I could?
Yeah, I, I have no concerns about any expansion by APET and, and, and its, uh, impact on our treatment and our distribution system.
Awesome. Great, thanks. That's all I had.
All right, good. Trustee Sella.
No report.
Trustee Lineum.
No report.
Trustee Coonsey.
Uh, no report.
Very good. Let's go around with the staff here. Administrator Johnson.
Um, just two items. Um, next Monday, there is a community events, uh, committee meeting at, uh, three o'clock in the afternoon, a Zoom meeting just to talk about and, um, the proposed schedule, um, in bigger picture terms, um, and what it will be. And then on March 15th, as a, a reminder, is our budget workshop. Unfortunately, we will have a couple of regular, uh, business items on the agenda, but they'll be very brief and then we'll move right into, um, the budget workshop, um, from there.
Good. Seth? Village Attorney.
No report, thank you.
Elder Department.
No report.
Public Works.
President Miller, you had asked at the last board meeting about our, our road salt situation. We've taken delivery of approximately five loads since that meeting and as of right now, we're, we're in good, good shape. Um, and we're still anticipating another five loads, uh, at some point before the end of the season. So there's a, an extraordinary demand and, uh, we're hearing it from other communities that some have gotten their salt and some have not. Um, we're anticipating being fine for the balance of the season.
Good. Now at this point, it's just watching the height of the river every day.
Uh, yeah.
Village Engineer.
No report.
Finance.
No report.
Thank you. Police Department.
No report, sir.
All right, very good. That takes us through staff. Last item is public comment on non-agenda items. Do we have anybody that would like to address us tonight? Chris.
Thank you, President Miller. And I appreciate the discussion tonight over the path, but that was an, uh, agenda item. Uh, I think it's very thoughtful. Uh, the item I wanted to mention was something I had sent to, uh, Lael as well, uh, was the, uh, KDOT has had an open house. It was February 4th for planning and environmental linkage. It's called a P E L for a project which will, uh, accept comments about the Randall over 90 traffic area. That was, goes from, uh, uh, Big Timber to Carrington. And they had that meeting on the 4th, but they're still accepting, uh, comments. If you have anything that you have, uh, any interest in the, uh, uh, commenting on the future plans for that, uh, that area because it is a, is kind of a bottleneck for traffic, uh, they are accepting until March 6th. If you go to randallover90.com, randallover90.com. It has a whole layout. It has a recording of the, uh, open house that they had with breakout meetings, which in, addressed environmental factors and, uh, traffic and safety and a number of other things. Almost too much to watch. It's, uh, there's a lot of stuff, but if you have a comment, go to Randall, randallover90.com and thank you.
Very good. All right, anybody else want to address us this evening? Okay, saying none, we have no executive session this evening, so unfortunately I will have to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Trustee Sella.
Yes.
Trustee Mahoney.
Yes.
Trustee Coonsey.
Yes.
And President Miller.
Yes, as well. Thank you all. We will see you all next week. Have a good time. Enjoy the sunshine.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.